Yes.
Andy.
Eileen, did you let Sam Mott in?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm right here.
Bye.
I thought they did.
All right, we ready, Eileen?
Yes.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Like to call the meeting to order? We'll begin with the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll move on. We'll start with the reports, discussions for the board president's report tonight. I wanted to bring a couple of things to the board's attention that Eileen was kind enough to put in as important reminders for us. There is the Board of Education self-evaluation that has been put on the Super Eval Tool through NYSABBA. We do need to complete that in the next 15 days if possible. If anybody has any issues with logging into the Super Eval Tool, I'm sure between Mel or Eileen, we would be able to get those links back to you in order to get those completed. The, there are some timelines associated with those. The board's evaluation, I believe, Eileen, correct me if I'm wrong, is to take place between the 15th of June and the first of July, which would be the beginning of the next fiscal year, not fiscal year, but calendar year for the district. Like to get the returns for this previous year completed by that point in time. Eileen begins her superintendent self-evaluation in, at the end of June on the 30th. And then the board members would go through and start their evaluation of the superintendent. I believe that this is our second year now of using this tool. I did my evaluation this afternoon and it brought back some thoughts as to preparing and organizing as we did last year. Unfortunately, some of the things that we had planned to do were sidelined. But in going through what was, what the questions were and preparing for our overall evaluations this year was a great reminder and thought process of putting things together and starting to get ourselves organized for next year, depending on how that all looks. So if, if the board could take a look at that over the next couple of weeks and shoot forward, July 1st is having that complete, it would be great. The other thing Eileen and her staff have done, and I'm sure many, many others have worked very hard on and wanted to recognize is the events that are planned or potentially planned for the graduation ceremonies for our students. I think it's remarkable that there had to be multiple offerings or multiple options made available and worked on and thought through in order to come up with ones that met the state guidelines that were currently in place when that happened. And Eileen and your group, thank you very much for the work that you all put into trying to get that done. The other thing that Eileen will get to here in a minute is the, are the tenure approvals. I think it, we're very, very lucky to have a great group of teachers that are working for us in our district that have reached this milestone. And, and tenure is a, is a great milestone to have achieved. And unfortunately, the work doesn't stop here and there's many more years to come. So thank you for being part of the district and, and I'm sure that Eileen will have some comments as well. With that, I'd like to move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, just a couple of, of housekeeping items. So today, I don't know if you noticed or not, but the governor said we can hold in-person meetings now to a number of 25 individuals. So we are looking to, or I'm proposing to the board, the, for our next meeting, which is our reorganizational meeting on July 6th, that we actually hold that meeting in person. We would find a location, whether it's a classroom or maybe even returning to the LGI to, to hold that board meeting again back in person. I don't know if the board has thoughts on that, if, if you guys are all right with that.
I'm completely fine with it. I don't know about the rest of the group.
Yeah, I agree.
I would agree too.
All right, so we'll plan on that and then I'll get with Deneen and we can, when we send out the agenda for that, we will make sure that we put the location of that meeting on there as well, so that you know where, where you're headed. So a couple of other things today, to date anyway, we have 1,427 ballots that have been turned in. So we still have until tomorrow when the polls close at 5 o'clock. And at 5:01, we will actually begin counting those ballots. I know Rich will be present while we do that and certainly, you know, the other board members, if you're interested in, in doing that, certainly feel free. We are going to be in the middle school gym and just allows for, you know, that social distancing piece. Unfortunately, it's not going to be ungodly hot tomorrow, so it should be environmentally wise, it should be a good, a good thing tomorrow to do in the gym. Couple of, of things that were posted today, the high school academic honors award ceremony was, was posted today by Rich Miller. So that is the award ceremony that is done by the WCTA, recognizes all of our students for their academic accomplishments in grades nine through 12. So if you have a chance to check that out, it, it is a nice video. Also, the virtual senior art show was posted. Mel did that over the weekend, I believe. And so that was, also highlights our senior artists and kind of give, gives them that, that senior art show vibe and it's, it's just a nice way to check out the, the artwork that our, that our seniors did. Um, interestingly enough, I received a pretty strange envelope in the mail and within the envelope, I received, received this postcard. I don't know if you guys can, can you see that without a glare? So this was sent to me from a man named Lowell Yorg, who lives in Inglewood, or I'm sorry, Stockton, California. And he writes that he was at an antique store and found this 1908 picture card of our beautiful school in that era. So he, he figured he, that we would enjoy it and at any rate, he hoped it brightened our day. It is, it's kind of funny. He is, he shares with me that he'll be turning 92 year, 92 years old on June 26th and says he's still going strong as far as he knows. He calls it's a little hobby of redistribution of happiness. And he says, I gave $6 for it. So if you want it for that, that's okay with me. Throw in a little postage if you want to. And my wife says that if you hear from them, then you'll have to take me out to lunch. So I did respond to Mr. Yorg and, you know, I, I personally paid him, you know, the money for the postcard and the, and for the postage, and I did put in some money so that he could take his wife out to lunch. So at the next reorganizational meeting, I will bring this and, and share that with you, but just wanted to give you a a quick snap of the postcard that, that we received. It's pretty cool. I don't, I haven't figured out yet if it's actually St. Joe's. But we'll, we'll have David take a look at it. I think David was, was back in school then, so he'll, he'll know for sure when, where it was. Um, we are, we've started to have some very preliminary conversations about our reopening plan. The administrative team met initially and now we have extended that group on to Tracy Proctor and Mike Donovan and Connie Hoffman to take a look at some of the components that we need to have in place for a reopening plan. So interestingly enough, there are four regional Regents Task Force meetings that are going to occur within the next week and a half. And they're going to have guidance out to us by July 13th on the reopening of school. And we have to have a plan into the state of New York by July 15th. So we started with a preliminary framework of what that would look like and have made the decision that we'll put in place what we think is, is appropriate and practical based upon the information that we have. And then we'll make changes as we, as we go along. Certainly part of, part of what we're going to be doing is looking to have a task force in place, which would include multiple stakeholders. And certainly we would ask someone from the board if they wanted to participate in that, that reopening task force. Again, to look at anything from what does transportation look like with social distancing? What is feeding the students that are here in the cafeteria if the kids can't go to the cafeteria, so on and so forth? So we will be providing you with a lot more information about that reopening plan, but we've had some, just some preliminary conversations and have started to put a template together on what conversation pieces we need to have in place as we, as we move forward. As Rich indicated, we have finalized our plans for graduation. For those who may not know, we're going to do kind of a combination of a drive-through and a drive-in. And in the letter that I sent out, there were six pieces that were important to our seniors. And with the plan that we have put in place, it, it ticked all six of those boxes. And to me, that was, that was important in terms of getting the kids' input and what they wanted. As you all know, there's a lot of opinion and ideas and, you know, we should be doing this type of things out there, but you know, I said to the students, it's important for us to do what they would like to have happen. So I think we have that in place and, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be a good day. Now just pray for sunshine and not rain. We also have, I met with, or I talked with Stephanie Howe, who is with the Grad Bash Committee. And they are putting together a modified version of a Grad Bash. Now it's important to keep in mind that Grad Bash is not affiliated with the school in any way, shape or form. It is not, Grad Bash is not sponsored by the school. It's not run by the school. It is a community-based organization and they have put together, you know, a very modified version of a Grad Bash. But it's going to allow our seniors to come together down at the complex and they are putting some safety protocols and procedures in place for the kids to get together. And it's going to be from 7 to 11 on the 26th of June. And I believe there's going to be a DJ and there's going to be opportunities to sign yearbooks. And the students are also going to wear their garb in terms of, we call it decision day, where they can wear the, whether they're going to be working at LMC, they can wear an LMC shirt, whether they're going to go to Colgate, RIT, Geneseo. So they'll highlight where the kids are actually going to go, what their future plans are, if you will. Another thing I wanted to bring to the board and actually would need the board's approval to proceed. We, obviously the students, the seniors did not get to go on the senior trip. We, with our attorney, have been trying to work with the travel agent to get money back from that travel agent. There was a significant amount of money that was given on students' behalf from parents. And so we are, we were hoping for a response by June 1st regarding that refund or a plan going forward, and we've not heard from them. So they're recommending that we proceed with legal action, but that does require board action to go ahead and do that moving forward. So questions on, on first the senior trip and then we can, anything else that, that I've talked about?
Eileen, what's the plan to do with the refund? Like what, what do you plan to do with that money?
We would give it back to the parents.
To the parents?
Yep.
So like they raise money for that as well though, correct?
Correct. The, the more money that the students fundraise, the less out-of-pocket costs. But you have some parents that actually paid $500 out of their own pocket to send their students on the senior trip. And, and those amounts ranged anywhere from $175 because their kid really fundraised very well versus those that didn't fundraise much at all. And so there, there are parents that have put in a good chunk of change towards their, towards the kid going on the senior trip. So that money technically is, is theirs.
Right.
Hey, Eileen.
Yeah.
What's, I don't know if you can hear me, I'm wearing headphones. I never wear headphones, so.
I had to find out the screen.
Yeah, no. What's the, um, how much money are we looking to get back? Is it going to be more cost-effective? I mean, how much are we going to spend legally to get back the money? Is there, is it really, you know, one of those, is it worth it? Do we just pay it out of our, you know, funding or something? Just throwing that out there.
So David can, did, I don't know if they've given us an exact number on, on what the legal fees would cost, but that is a question that, that we've asked. We, according to our attorneys, we cannot, as a district, refund the parents that money. Anything you want to add to that? David, you've, you've talked quite a bit with, with the attorney.
Yeah, basically, we are doing it on kind of a T and M basis, time and materials. At an hourly rate, we have discussed what we feel is kind of a limit that we would probably spend. So we feel it's worth at least proceeding with the litigation, get a court appearance and see if we can, we have pretty good evidence on our side. We're hoping that it would be kind of a quick case and our goal is not to spend over $2,500.
Okay, thanks.
What, what do we do with the balance in those accounts, Dave? But, you know, I think that senior account has a fair number. Does that get redistributed to the other classes? How does that work?
So that's really up to the senior class to decide what they would like to do. We really, we can offer some guidance, if you will. But again, as Eileen said, it's really their money.
Okay. Eileen, do you want the board to have a motion in a second at this point for the, for the proceeding to collect that money?
We would need something official, Rich, to, to say that it was brought before the board. And then we can, I can certainly have Deneen add that as, as an agenda item. Maybe that becomes, after we approve the reorganizational meeting date, we throw that in there, like eight, eight and a half as a motion to, if the board wants to proceed with legal action to, to recoup money that was given by parents. So we can, we can add that in there if, if that works for you.
How about the rest of the board? Are you all right with that?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Before we get to the consent items, there were some updates that Deneen had, had, I believe, emailed you regarding some personnel issues. So just a quick reminder that they are there. And certainly if you have questions, we can address them when we get there. But any other questions about anything that I shared or anything that I didn't share that you're wondering about?
No, I'm, I'm good. Everyone else is?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Eileen. We'll move on to the first board action is the approval of the minutes. We're going to need a motion and a second to approve the Tuesday, Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, regular board meeting minutes. And the Tuesday, May 26th, 2020, regular board meeting and budget hearing minutes. Are there any questions on either of those two minute reports? One, one question I did have on the May 26th report, it, it does not show Mike Heinman as being present. But I do believe later in the minutes, it shows that Mike had voted. And I believe Mike was present at that meeting and I just want to, if, if that's so, if the minutes are correct.
That was the last meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I was. I was delayed maybe five minutes or so, yeah.
So we would need to correct those minutes? Yep.
We had gotten through the first part of the board meeting. We had made it to the budget hearing when Mike came in.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why you see him not there during the first part?
Board meeting.
And then budget hearing followed. He came in then.
You are right, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, as I recall, yeah.
I didn't know how that worked, Deneen. I appreciate that. Just wanted to make sure you were, you were getting your due.
Yeah.
On the meeting minutes?
No.
Need a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Peace.
Motion carried. And we'll move on to the approved tenure appointments as recommended by the superintendent, Eileen Feynman. I believe there was a recent modification that Eileen will speak to on that.
So I emailed you an updated list of our individuals that are receiving tenure tonight. And I believe that all of them present with us, doing it virtually. Certainly, this is an exciting time for our new teachers and we, well, I shouldn't say we. Our instructional coaches and Becky with the administrators worked on creating a slide presentation, which is, which is going to highlight all of the individuals that are up for tenure tonight. And I'm going to, in a minute, I'm going to share my screen, which will then also share the, the slide presentation. And the principals are going to briefly talk about each of their teachers respectively. So bear with me for just a minute while I share my screen. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so welcome to the 2019, 2020 Whalen Cohocton Tenure Night. And we are going to start off with, we are going to start off with readjusting our slides. It's great when it works. Okay, so what? Hold on, sorry. I apologize. There we go. We are going to start with elementary school. And first up, we, oh my goodness. There we go. We have Nicole Gardner.
Nicole is at Whalen Elementary School. I was privileged to inherit her along with the other folks that will present to you today from Whalen Elementary. Off to the right of the pictures that'll be shared with you, you will see quotes from our, our recommendees who will be receiving tenure tonight and what they feel is the best part of being an educator or a teacher. Mrs. Gardner is truly a dedicated and talented literacy teacher and interventionist, and certainly a positive influence within our community of learners. She has consistently provided opportunities for her students to participate and partner in the learning process. And her methods keep some of our most reluctant and struggling learners trying and actually having fun doing so.
Hi. Elizabeth Hall. Mrs. Hall teaches third grade in Cohocton Elementary. Mrs. Hall has a passion for working with students and families. She contributes to our school community and is a positive and productive part of educating our children. One of my favorite parts about being in Mrs. Hall's room is just her ability to make connections with, with all the students that she teaches.
Zoe Nickerbacher is one of our kindergarten teachers. She is a consummate professional. Not only does she create a classroom community where her students feel happy, comfortable and loved, she also models each day what being respectful looks like and sounds like. Her actions are a model for others to emulate. She is truly grace under pressure. And honestly, I've watched her in some tricky situations with students and wish that I could just have that calm presence that she has. Next up is Samantha Mott, one of our first grade teachers. She is a dynamic first grade teacher who is, has this flexible, interactive teaching style that is really engaging to her students. She regularly utilizes small group instruction and individual conferring sessions to glean student strengths and needs as well as differentiates her instruction to help her eaglet for.
Joanne Stuck. Mrs. Stuck teaches fourth grade in Cohocton Elementary. Mrs. Stuck demonstrates a strong work ethic and dedication to the students, the families in the Whalen Cohocton District. Professionalism is a balance of competence, experience and motivation. Mrs. Stuck is truly an asset to the district. One of my favorite parts about being in Mrs. Stuck's classroom is just her ability to take teachable moments with kids and meet them where they're at, but at the same time, challenge them. I often tell Mrs. Stuck, when I'm in her classroom doing, watching a lesson, then I'll see you later in the hall. We're often telling her that I wish she could have taught me math when I was in elementary school. So she's just a great asset to Cohocton.
Jackie Wolfanger is one of our fourth grade teachers and she is a, you'll see in my quote, that she's a seasoned professional. But she takes so much knowledge that she has had as a special education teacher before becoming a general education teacher and just applies it so phenomenally in our team-blended classroom. She is dedicated and a seasoned professional who truly goes above and beyond to cultivate a learning environment where her kids have this sense of mutual respect and they persevere in the face of adversity. And that's the norm in her classroom. Her day-to-day actions ensure her students feel valued and capable of positively contributing to their own growth as learners.
All right. This is Scott Manny, middle school principal. It's my pleasure to recognize for tenure tonight, Mr. Jacob Kenny. Jake is a caring and passionate health and physical education teacher. He fuses his knowledge of health and physical education into each interaction with his students and challenges them at their current level and abilities. The students find success and in turn are willing to develop lifelong skills that will continue to benefit their health and physical well-being. Next up is Ms. Alex Lee Matty. Alex's love of learning, reading and teaching are contagious as soon as you enter a classroom. Her students are consistently smiling and engaged in the learning process because she makes it enjoyable and connect- because she makes it enjoyable and connects it to what they're personally interested in whenever possible. She also helps her peers with her technical savvy as they learn new ways to incorporate it into their teaching. Ms. Misty Loop, or excuse me, Mrs. Loop, is a dedicated and caring therapist for the blind and visually impaired. She excels in developing meaningful rapport and connects her knowledge learned through these relationships consistently to her instruction, which provides a deeper commitment and meaning to their learning. She also uses her artistic abilities to improve the climate of the building by designing creative and inspiring bulletin boards. And Ms. Kristy Schaefer is our local tech expert, teacher, and instructional coach. She has led the students and staff in challenging themselves to grow and learn about new technology and applications that can make learning more meaningful. A key component of her instruction is developing work readiness skills through critical thinking, collaboration, and problem-solving skills. She is our go-to person for how-to videos when the need arises. And Mr. Daniel Watson is a dedicated special education teacher that is committed to improving learning for all the students he works with. He excels at reaching students that others may be challenged to effectively teach academically, as well as in developing socially and emotionally. He always finds a way to help the students' learning grow by collaborating with his team and the students' parents for guardians.
Okay, can everyone hear me? All right, so it is my pleasure really to recognize two teachers in the high school who are up for tenure this year. Both of them, my math nerds, as I affectionately call them, but they're really great. And first up is Beth Gibbs. She is the teacher that students always remember. They just really know that she cares about them. She pushes them to achieve their maximum potential. She's a leader in her department and in our building. She's always learning and growing. And like I said here, her contributions to our students and our school really cannot be overstated. When you have a teacher who loves her kids and can convince them that they can do it, that's really powerful. She's also great at communicating with families. And next up is Mr. Tolent, and he really is the kind of teacher that I would want my own kids to have. He leads by example. He sets the tone with high expectations. And yet it's really fun in that classroom. I love being in there because they're doing some great work and they're serious about that, but he's also just really fun. And he is a leader in our district. He's well-respected by others. These two are both just absolute stars. It doesn't get much better than this. So it's really an honor to recommend them.
All right, so I'm gonna stop sharing here for a minute. All right, and so it is my pleasure, when I look down this list of names, as Josie said, the list, you can't get much better than what we have before you right here. And so without further ado, I'd like to recommend those following individuals that you just heard about for tenure within the Whalen Cohocton School District.
Does the board have any questions? Yes, if there's no questions, we need a motion and a second to approve the tenure appointments as recommended by Superintendent Eileen Feynman.
I'll make the motion.
I'll gladly second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, folks.
Yes, congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Certainly, if you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. It's, it's a great, it's a great time. But certainly you are more than welcome to, to leave the meeting at this time and go out and enjoy some sunshine.
He never lets us do that, by the way.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we will move on to the item number five on the agenda, approved recommendation, business office contract staff. Eileen, that is the recommendation from Mandy with regards to Dave Mastin and Barb Miller.
Correct. So we're hoping that, well, not we're hoping, we're recommending that Barb and Dave be available to new folks into the business office, and that would take place in July after their retirement dates. And again, just giving us an extra pair of hands and I lost my train of thought. Diane White actually, actually has been spending some time in the business. But to say that, you know, we've been running businesses normal is an understatement. And so, you know, trying to manage the current day-to-day events as they are and learning the traditional system is obviously time-consuming. So we're thankful that both David and Barb have agreed to provide us with some help after their actual retirement date.
Are there any questions? If there's no questions, we need a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of business office contract staff.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to approve the flex benefit, or excuse me, accept the 2019-20 year-end entries. Dave, maybe a little explanation on that would be helpful.
Sure. Every year, our audit as all schools doesn't take place until after June 30th. However, we're required to have our entries in place as part of that audit. So it's kind of a twofold operation is that the auditors have already come in and done what we call a pre-audit. And then they will be back after we have, in essence, paid the bills type of thing, closed the books, and then they will finalize their audit report. Now, as part of that, what we would do is we're asking, obviously, per the memo, is a recommendation to use our unassigned, unappropriated fund balance, in essence, to make transfers to reserves. And those are spelled out in, in the memo. So we don't know exactly what those dollar amounts will be, and those will be once the auditors come, in essence, review our books, and they will make the final recommendation. So what we're asking for, and we do this every year at this time of year, is just your approval to make those transfers to the reserves, capital reserve, insurance reserve, liabilities, et cetera, as outlined in the memo. And then we also, as part of this current school year, is the use of expenditures for employee benefits and accrued liabilities. We'll take the money out of those reserves as well as the vehicle and equipment to pay for those related expenditures. And we also will take what transportation aid that is specifically allocated to this current year's school bus purchases and put that into the vehicle and equipment reserve. That's what we use then to buy future buses with no cost then to the taxpayer. So again, all those, those last two items, excuse me, the transportation aid, we have a specific number because those buses were already purchased. We know what that one is. The other ones, as I said, will take place once the auditors come in and perform their final audit. Any questions on that?
Dave, how does, how do those numbers compare with past years? I mean, is it more or less?
It's almost the same from year to year, basically. Now, I can't say that going forward. Obviously, the tail end of this year's been a little different. But the numbers will be about the same that we've done in the past. So next year, as part of our proposed budget for next year, we did double the amount of our reserves in order to balance the budget. So that's part of what we would be refunding back into those reserves so that we have that to carry forward into next year.
Anyone else have any questions for Dave? Need a motion and a second to accept the 2019-20 year-end entries.
Oh, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to item seven, approve the flex benefit addendums. That's Lori Raymond. I don't know if that's a Mandy or Dave. If anyone needs any brief explanation on that. Any questions on those amendments? Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the flex benefit addendum.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to approve the 2020-21 reorganizational meeting date, which I believe Eileen has said is at 6:00 PM on July 6th.
Correct.
There's no questions. I need a motion and a second to approve the, approve the 2020-21 reorganizational meeting date of July 6th, 2020.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. So we're adding section 8.5, Eileen.
Correct.
Just motion to proceed with legal hearing to collect monies expended for the senior trip. And recover, correct?
Correct.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion carried. So moving on to the consensus agenda, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eileen, there are a couple of additions in the retirement and in the resignation areas. We have the addition of Mary Jane Parks duplicating clerk effective June 30th, 2020, which is a retirement. We have the retirement of W. Tom Quatz, bus driver, effective June 30th, 2020. In the resignation area, we have the additional resignation of Tiana Kenny, clerk typist, effective June 12th, 2020. Weiner, effective July 16th, 2020.
And Rich, you also have the addition of the the summer contracts for vision and mobility and orientation and for occupational therapy for a couple of our special education students requiring some ES, or some related services over the summer.
And that would be for Misty Loop on the vision services and orientation and mobility, and Monica Stewart for the occupational therapy.
Correct.
One point of discussion that I did want to bring up to the board with regard to a consensus item related to fall and winter coaches and advisors, chairs, and coordinators. This is the first read of the lists that were provided in our packet. I do have a little bit of concern as with regard to the timing of the approvals. Number one, we don't have a budget in place yet. Number two, I'm not sure we know the parameters. I know we don't know the parameters of returning to school, and then which events would be able to be held. Nor, for instance, and I'm not picking on football, but the expenses related to possibly fielding teams such as those that are contact sports that may require additional expense. Just, just my thoughts and, and just consideration that before we move to approve those, that we make sure we have all considerations in place prior to having them on an agenda for an approval item. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts or comments regarding that or any other consensus items.
Rich, if we were to agree to it, like what, are we held against anything to pay that? Like if something doesn't happen or doesn't occur, do we still have to pay them for it?
I, I will probably defer to Eileen or David to answer that, Kelly, but I, I do believe if it's approved, and again, this is just the first read, but I do believe that there are some contract requirements regarding payment of stipends for those activities.
So as Rich said, remember, yes, this is just a first read, and we do need more information in terms of what things are gonna look like you know, in the fall. And so we would have to have some conversations with the WCTA regarding what, what that would look like given circumstances, if such, if there was not athletics or you know, we didn't return to school in the fall, there would be some type of a modified you know, payment. And I, and I, I don't even know what that would look like right at the moment, but we would have conversations with the, with the WCTA in regards to you know, those contractual requirements and being fiscally prudent if in fact we don't have any sports or we don't return to school in the fall. So and I've had some preliminary conversations with Leslie as well about that. So she, she knows that you know, we would have to sit down and talk about what that would look like.
So are we held to that July 6th approved date, or if we don't have enough information, can we move it till later?
We can move it till later.
Then I agree with Rich's inclination and Kelly's.
Yeah. I would table it for now, yeah.
Yeah, and
I don't think, I don't think you want to table the, the list in the first read, though. That's all it is.
Well, it is a first read, yes.
If we have any issues, we can discuss those at the next meeting. But I agree as far as before we vote on anything, we certainly want to know what the State of the Union is, or the state of New York State, I should say. So I, I agree with Rich is that when a time comes, we really need to discuss all that and, and know what the parameters are before we do anything. Eileen's idea of having an out already built in would allow us to proceed and so people can, you know, start thinking along that line, and yet still get out of it if we need to, so.
Well, and the governor just approved over the weekend the ability for some youth sports to be able to start to, you know, to, to gather. And, you know, we included baseball and softball and field hockey. But, you know, no, no soccer. You know, to me, field hockey is just soccer with a stick. You know, so it doesn't, what the rhyme or reason is, I'm not really 100% sure, but, you know, we'll, we'll see where that goes in terms of the youth sports even beginning to, to start up again.
Are there any other questions on any of the consent items? If there's no questions, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to Moving on to the item number 10 is the policies. I believe, Eileen, you included two policies in our packet related to graduation. And one was diploma or credential options. These are, now, are these, these are new policies, I'm assuming, and now they are coordinated policies. One is, one is updated, which is the diploma or credential options for students with disabilities. And the other is also updated as well. So I guess my only question on these, how do they compare with the new regulations in the part 100 of the commissioner regulation report? Graduation.
So Rich, I'm trying to, just bear with me. I I don't have anything in our packet about policies.
I don't see.
I think that is a, I think that is a typo, Rich.
Or was that information, was that sent to the board maybe for them to review? To look at?
I don't remember seeing anything.
No.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see anything in the, in the packet either.
No, there's nothing about policies.
I don't know where I got them then. But there says policies on the
This does say policies, yeah.
Item number 10, and I had two policies when I printed off my packet.
I think the policies may have just been there from a past agenda.
Okay, so we'll remove item number 10, policies from the agenda for the evening.
Good, because I was confused.
Well, I'll, we'll remove that, Rich, for right now and then I will, I'll sit with Danine tomorrow and
Okay.
We'll figure out where that came from.
All right. Well, soon we'll be back in person, so certainly, certainly, things can happen. We're learning different things all the time with these types of meetings. So apologize if that's confusing. I just
We had me confused for a minute there. I'm like, um, I don't know.
All right. So moving on to closing remarks, Eileen.
So I did forget to show you guys, we, when it was teacher appreciation week. I think we had shared with you every day, you know, a little gesture of our appreciation for our faculty and staff. So the last day, if you remember, we, we shared with you that we purchased face masks for, for all of our employees in the district. So this is what they actually look like. We did include our seniors in the purchase of our face masks. So each of our seniors is also going to be receiving one of these on Friday when they pick up their, their yearbooks and caps and gowns and so on and so forth. Just a couple of quick things that I wanted to add to the upcoming events. The senior scholarship ceremony is, is going to be this Thursday, June 18th at 7:00 PM. And that is our traditional senior scholarship where there's a significant amount of funds that are given to our seniors and it really is, is a pretty, it's a pretty exciting and fun event that we, that we do. Again, this year it's going to be virtual, but if you have a chance to check that out on Thursday, it really is a good thing to watch. And then I also added on there that grad is going to be due in 2028 at 1:00 PM. That's all I have. If anything else you wanted to add.
Budget vote tomorrow evening. That opening right after 5:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
We held in the middle school gym.
Correct.
The next upcoming event is a reorganizational meeting that will take place on July 6th of 2020. If there's nothing else, I need a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session to discuss ongoing contract negotiations.
What does the reorganizational meeting actually include?
Okay, so we have several members running for the board this year, so it will be, or several, two members and one other individual. Those elections, there is a reorganizational meeting to elect officers for the board for the upcoming school year from July 1 through June 30th. Eileen, are there other items on that agenda that will be put in place for the reorg meeting?
Sure. So you'll also establish your school board meeting dates for the, for the next school year. You also annually are required to appoint your district treasurer, your tax collector, district clerk, purchasing agent, your school physician, school attorneys, external auditor, claims auditor. So it really is just an approval of, of individuals that fill in those, in those roles that is, that are required by, that are required by the state.
Good question, Kelly. Thanks. Any, any other questions?
You'll get a list, Kelly, of, of what those are. There's over, there's over 27 of them, 27 items that are on that reorganization list. So you'll get a, you'll get a summary of that before that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Any other questions? So we do need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss ongoing contract negotiations.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.